...council meeting. We don't have any Boy Scouts here this evening. We don't have any Girl Scouts here this evening? No? Okay. So, I would just like to ask you all. Oh, is our cameraman ready?
Yeah.
Okay. Please join us. The Pledge of Allegiance, thank you.
(inaudible)
The roll, please.
Belkey?
Here.
Belzak?
Here.
Kenny?
Here.
Marquese?
Here.
MacIver?
Here.
Shower?
Here.
Seifert?
Here.
Seven present.
We have a quorum. The next item is questions, comments, and announcements of a general nature. We added this, number five, quite a while ago to allow residents, anyone in the audience, who can't stay through the whole meeting to address any issues they'd like to at this point. It doesn't have to be items that are just on the agenda this evening, so if anyone wanted to address the council on any kind of item, please come forward. Then let's move on to item six is approval of minutes, but we don't have any minutes to approve, so we'll move right on to receiving of communications. Do any of the aldermen have communications to share? Then I'll share one I received from Tom and Arleda Pecknick. They sent me an email. They were very happy with our Public Works Department coming out. They had developed a crack in their driveway because of the work that was done with ditch pipe replacement project, and they were very happy with how well it was handled and wanted to compliment our Public Works Department, so I'll present that for the record. If there's no other communications, let's move on to the mayor's report, and it's always this special time of year when we invite, when we have our holiday decorating winners come forward this evening for their awards, and I'd like to have our head person of the committee, Chairman Jeanette Campo, come up and begin to tell us who are the winners this year. Jeanette, do we need a little riser there for her? You know?
At least bring that down.
Okay. Can you bring that down lower for yourself?
How about that? No?
Need to speak into it.
That?
That's better.
Is that okay?
Yeah.
That's better. Okay. Well, good evening, Mayor Weaver, council members. How are you?
We're good, thank you.
Good, good, good. Well, to start off, all I can say is that weather-wise, it was pretty good. It was cold, but then, your crew and you, thank you. Streets were great, as usual. We found that this year, usually there were a lot of themes. One year we would have reindeer. Everybody had reindeers, and next year they had candy canes and so forth and so on. This year, I kind of think that we had the year of the lights, all over the bushes, the roofs, the trees, and the driveway and everything. So, I would assume that this year was the year of the lights. Now, before I talk about who's going to win what, I would also like to say that people should understand that the nominations that we had, we chose the houses that we thought were worthy of awards. Now, there were a lot of houses that we saw, and I'm sure even now, that are decorated, but they hadn't been nominated. So, if you see a house and you kind of don't agree with our decisions, it's simply because they weren't nominated. So, next year, if you decide that you like a house, please nominate them so that we can take it from there, okay? That's about it. Now, it's my pleasure to introduce the committee. They are great. First, I'd like to introduce Jim Kaiser. Just, come on. Stand up. Okay. And of course, there's Jerry Legansky.
Thank you. Thank you.
And we have a new member this year, and her name is Elizabeth Hayes, known as Liz. Welcome. Okay. Now, I'd like to say that the finalists, they were really nice to work with. They were agreeable, they were reachable, and it was really a good time. I'd like to begin with our honorable mentions first. Our first one is on 8510 Thistlewood, and it's Mr. and Mrs. John and Donna Sims.
It's actually Jim Sims.
I beg your pardon. Jim Sims.
Yes. He happens to be here.
Jim, welcome. This is the first time you've entered?
Yeah.
Glad you did.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Now, this house is decorated from the garage along the sidewalk and then the back of the house. There are big lights, like the colored bulbs, actually, and the bulbs are just stuck in the ground, and they're along the driveway, and they really, really look nice. There's bushes, and the bushes have trees. The bushes have lights on them, the trees have lights on them. There's reindeers, and there's a snowman, and there's a Christmas tree in the window. It took about four days off and on to decorate this house, and after the holidays, guess what? He's got so many decorations, he stores them someplace away from home.
Oh, my.
Thank you, Jim. Okay. And I did say that the address is in Thistlewood?
Yes.
Okay. Our next honorable mention is Scott and Betty Olazar. They are at 8006 Farmingdale. Now, at this house, you'll see something in every window. All the trees have lights on them. There are toy soldiers and light poles with lights on them. There's a center tree with figures on it, and don't forget to check out the white horse. It's like so big. And there's lights on the ground and at the side of the house. They did a nice job, so thank you. Our first Monday winner is the Sontor family, but I'm sorry to say they can't make it tonight because they have other obligations, but they're located at 7349 Adams, and they have arches across the sidewalk in front of their house, so you can't miss it. There's soldiers at the bottom of these poles that hold the arches, and they're guarding everything. Now, there's lights along the driveway, and there's candy canes, and above the garage they have lights, and you'll see a big snowman on the side, and be sure, really be sure, to look for this great big brown dog that they have. It's standing right near the front door. You can't miss it. They did a nice job, and you could see that they had fun doing it. So, thank them very much. Our fourth place winner is 7601 Nantucket Drive, and it's Shirley Michaels. You step up, please. I have to say, we don't have very many children this year. They're all grown up.
Well, now, is this a surprise?
Now, we have granted.
Mrs. Michaels, that she did not know that she was in fourth place? Did she know? Did you know ahead of time?
No.
So, this was a surprise?
Yes.
I'm always honorable mentioned.
Congratulations. Did you help? Did you help? Did you help too? Congratulations.
Now, this house is decorated from the front and on the side. You'll see reindeer with lights, blue lights and red lights around the tree. In fact, all the trees have lights on them. There's little trees on the side of the house, and they do have lights, and there's more to see because she's not through decorating yet, and her little granddaughter says, "I just love it." So, thank you very much, Mrs. Michaels. Our third winner is 8125 Sawyer, and it's a Hart family. This is a real eye catcher. When you see this house, you'll know why. The entire roof, from one end to the other, has white lights running across it. I mean, there's a zillion of them. They go up the chimney, and on the chimney, there's also an eagle and a rock. I mean, it's amazing. It really, they have soldiers up and down the driveway. There's a sleigh at the side of the house, and you'll see figures in the window and many, many, many lights. It took Mr. Hart about eight hours just to put the lights up on the roof. Amazing, amazing. And he did the work all by himself. Good job, and thank you. Now, our second runner-up is at 1508 Willow Creek. It's the Coletta family. Can you step up, please? You'll hear music playing when you view this house. There's a huge tree that's surrounded by foliage. There's lights all over in the circle. There are bushes with red lights and some have green lights, and in the center is a nativity scene, and it's made out of wood, and it was built by Mr. Coletta, so it really is very, very nice.
Very nice.
Lights are around the garage door. There are candy canes. There's large snowflakes, I mean, big ones. They're hanging along this large, with large ornaments, and are hanging from one of the biggest tree out in front. There's much, much more to see, believe me, so take the time, look carefully, and really, really enjoy. The decorations were put up by Mr. Coletta with the help of his children, and the decorations are done because Mr. Coletta said he loves children, he loves Christmas, and his mother got him started when he was a boy. So, and again, his winnings will go to Our Lady of Mark Carmel Church for a special organization. So, thank you.
Very nice.
Now, our first place winner, long, long story.
We've heard her name before, too.
Many, many times. I'll tell you how many. One, two, three, four, five. Six times. She has gone, and her husband has gone, from first place to fourth place to second place to third place. One year, they didn't even nominate themselves or whoever nominated. It just didn't happen, but this year was a good year. The decorations on this home take you back many, many years. By the way, it's done up. It's rustic-looking. You'll see ice skates hanging by the door on the wall, and near the front door, there's an old slate which this young lady upscaled and much, much more. I'd like to call her up now, Mrs. Lori Redsec. I'd like to tell you, through the years, Mr. Redsec didn't do much. He just doesn't care about decorating, but he does come, does he not? But this year, he really has a good reason this year. He's had surgery, and he's on crutches, so he wasn't able to come, so he's forgiven.
Okay.
But really, the house is done up very, very nice. You can see there's a lot of time spent in it, and there's a lot of love. There's snowflakes all around the windows, above the windows. There's a Christmas tree in the window, a large reindeer is by the side of the house. There's an angel, and everything is all lit up. There's even a letter of Santa Claus in the mailbox, so if you get a chance, take a look at that. That's kind of funny and cute. Again, like I said, all the decorations were done by Mrs. Redsec. She starts about a week before Thanksgiving. You know, she hung up the lights herself on the eaves of the house and on the top there, and this is true. This is really true because we not only were told that this is what she did, but we have proof because one of our judges had happened to pass by on the day that she was hanging these lights, so she does do the work all by herself, and she does climb up on the roof. Congratulations. She does say that she loves decorating, and she finds it very uplifting, and those are our winners.
I don't think she mentioned the address for the winning house.
Oh, the address. Oh, my goodness. It's 1118 Seventy-Ninth Street. Can't miss it. Very nice. Now, that about covers everything, and before I leave, I would like to just say that, of course, we thank you again for having this contest because it really is a lot of fun, but we have something for the community and for the council and for you, Mrs. Mayor. One of our judges, Jim Kaiser, was kind enough to take pictures of all the houses that were decorated and that won awards, and he has them here with him right now.
Yes.
Will you bring them up, please?
And he guarded that carefully so nobody could see what was in there.
He's so dependable.
Like the Academy Awards here, Jim. Oh, my gosh. Look at that. Beautiful.
He did a very nice job. You'll notice the building.
They call it Jim Kaiser.
It looks like a chimney, the background.
We went old-school this year.
Very nicely done.
Very nice. We'll put that in our lobby upstairs. Thanks, Jim. Yes, yes, please do.
Now, I'd like to remind everyone that in the future, if you are decorating your home, please nominate yourself. It's okay. If you're riding down the street and you see a house that you kind of like, nominate them. It's a pleasure to see the joy on their faces when I approach them and tell them that they have won an award. It's very exciting, and they deserve it. They really, really deserve it because they all work very, very hard. Then that's the end of my speech.
And we have the holiday tour, which, did you want to mention that too, Jeanette?
Sure, I'd be happy to. I'd be happy to. The holiday tour starts on Wednesday. The first tour is at 6:30 in the evening, and the second tour is at 8 o'clock. Now, you need reservations, is that correct?
Yes, you do.
Okay. You need reservations, so all you have to do is call City Hall and let them know that you'd like to take the bus tour to see the houses, and you'll be fine. So, thank you very much. I appreciate you listening to me, and I enjoy being here, and most important of all, have a wonderful holiday. Drive safely home. Thank you.
Jeanette, thank you so much. You've been doing this for a number of years, and we really appreciate all that you do. Jerry and Jim and Liz, our new member, thank you very much. I'm sure you had a lot of fun doing this. It's one of those fun committees. Thank you very much. And Jim, we'll put that poster board up in our hall upstairs in the lobby. If you want to give it to Scott, Scott Corn here, he can make sure it gets up in the lobby. We can even put it up tonight, but thank you very much for making that board. It's beautiful.
And thanks to everyone who decorates because it does make the, you know, the cold and the snow seem that much nicer, at least.
It does, and every year, I tell myself that I'm going to drive around the city and nominate some homes, and then I forget to do it, so.
This year was short. It seemed like very, we didn't have a whole lot of time.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, let's move to the next item on our agenda, which is the Darien Chamber of Commerce report.
Good evening, everybody. A heartfelt thank you to Home Run In for hosting the Holiday Extravaganza on December 7th. A big thank you to our vendors, participants, and those who donated food for the Darien Lions Club Holiday Food Basket Program. The Darien Chamber of Commerce is excited to announce the 2014 City of Darien Vehicle Sticker, which is here, went on sale at City Hall for $3. The Chamber is offering the first 100 residents that come and purchase the sticker a free Shop Local Shop Darien Preferred Card. Our Shop Local Shop Darien Preferred partners are Wild Orchid Salon, Chuck Southern Comfort Cafe, La Note Deue, The Goddard School, Zazo's Pizza and Catering, Carriage Greens Country Club, Culvers, Carmelite Carefree Village, Bein Our Dentist, Home Run In, The Patio, Mia Bella Candles, Mi Hacienda, and Q Bar and Grill. Our partner list will continue to grow in 2014. Remember to shop local and shop Darien this holiday season. The Darien Chamber of Commerce will be participating in the State of the County address. The keynote speaker will be Chairman of DuPage County, Dan Cronin. This event will be held on January 8th, 11:30 a.m. at Seven Bridges Golf Club. The Rotary Club of Darien is hosting a business after-hours on January 23rd, 5:00 p.m. at Republic Bank. The Darien Historical Society will host their annual Sunday Dinner on January 26th, 1:00 p.m. at Alpine Banquets, featuring Terry Lynch as Benjamin Franklin. For ticket information, call 630-964-6792. Advanced reservations only. No tickets will be sold at the door. The Goddard School is hosting a new and used book collection drive in collaboration with the Bernies Book Bank to collect 25,000 new and used, or gently-used children's books to help increase book ownership among at-risk infants, toddlers, preschool, and school-aged children. The Darien Goddard School goal is to collect 1,500 books before the National Reading Day on January 23rd. Join them for an open house on January 18th, where they're going to be collecting books, listening to storytellers, enjoying balloon artists, face painters, and more. Book donations are being accepted at the Goddard School located at 8350 Lamont Road here at City Hall. You're going to be accepting books.
That's right.
And at Republic Bank at 1510 Seventy-Fifth Street. On behalf of the Darien Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors, we wish everyone a happy holidays. Thank you.
Thank you, Claire. I don't want to, under the mayor's report, I don't want to forget to say thank you to the Darien VFW, Post 2838, and the Chamber for hosting their ribbon cutting at their location on Kiasse Avenue in our strip mall. It was a wonderful, wonderful event, and they have done a wonderful job of making that a very welcoming and warm place for anyone to go. They made it as their post-home, but visitors are welcome at that location any time, I guess. I'm not sure if they have hours posted or not, but you have to go by and see it because they did a beautiful job on the interior of that facility. So, thanks to them. Let's move on to the city clerk's report.
Just a couple of items. The city offices will be closed on Tuesday, December 24th, Wednesday, December 25th, and also Wednesday, January 1st for the holidays.
Thank you. City administrators' report?
Thank you, Mayor Weaver. I just have one item. Normally, the first Monday in January, we're able to pass on the council meeting, usually due to lack of agenda items, but just for scheduling purposes, I think we'll have agenda items so you can plan for a meeting on January 6th. Thank you. That's all I have. Thanks.
All righty. Let's move to department head information. No report, chief?
No report, Madam Mayor.
No? Okay. Chief, you sent a very interesting email to me over the weekend. Is that information that you could talk about this evening?
We can discuss it in very general terms, Mayor.
Yes.
Several weeks ago, one of our officers conducted a traffic stop. That traffic stop resulted in a seizure of narcotics. Our DEA Task Force officer was notified. He began a follow-up investigation and proceeding from that traffic stop. He seized a certain quantity of narcotics and over a quarter of a million dollars in cash. What's unique about this seizure is because it originated with a Darien police officer. Our Darien canine was used to sniff the drug money, and our DEA Task Force officer was used to conduct the investigation. So, in terms of the $224,000, in excess of $224,000, we will be eligible for a significant portion of that as opposed to the normal Department of Justice percentage.
Very good. That was really great news to hear, how effective our police department and... Any questions for the department heads? Let's move on to the treasurer's report, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This evening, I'm requesting approval of warrant number 13, 14, 15, the amount of $408,696.22 in listed funds and payroll for the period ended December 12th, the amount of $272,781.97 for a total to be approved of $681,478.19.
Do I have a motion to approve? Alderman Kenny, seconded by Alderman Seifert. Any questions for the treasurer? Then the roll, please.
Kenny?
Aye.
Seifert?
Aye.
Shower?
Aye.
MacIver?
Aye.
Marquese?
Aye.
Belzak?
Aye.
Belkey?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
The warrant has been approved. Did you want to go over the monthly report?
The monthly report of revenue and expenditures for the period ended November 30th indicates general fund year-to-date revenue of $8,656,968, expenditures of $6,823,763, for a current balance of $2,756,791. Water fund year-to-date revenue of $2,922,200, expenditures of $2,910,96, for a current balance of $884,401. Motor fuel tax fund year-to-date revenue $421,078, expenditures of $251,948, for a current balance of $461,839. Water depreciation fund year-to-date revenue of $61,852, expenditures $129,320, current balance of $675,250. Capital improvement fund year-to-date revenue of $4,051,451, expenditures of $2,688,539, current balance of $5,174,009. And capital projects debt service fund, year-to-date revenue $498,689, expenditures of $86,838, for a current balance of $419,712.
Any questions for the treasurer on that report? Good. Thank you. Let's go to standing committee reports, to the chairman here, reports. Alderman Marquese?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is just a reminder that the Municipal Services Committee will be meeting again next Monday, December 23rd, at 6:30 here in the council chambers.
Alderman Shower?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Our next admin finance meeting will be held Monday, January 6th, at 6:00 p.m. in our upstairs conference room.
Alderman MacIver?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Our next meeting of the Police Committee will be on Monday, January 20th, 2014, at 6:00 p.m. here in the council chamber, pending agenda items, and I'd like to submit the approved minutes from the November 18th, 2013 Police Committee meeting.
Thank you. Let's move to questions, comments, agenda-related. I believe the council was able to cover everything that was on the agenda this evening, but I'd like to open it up to the floor. Anyone in the audience want to address any of the items that are on our agenda this evening? Let's move on then, and there is no old business, so we did make one change to our agenda this evening. There was only one item on the consent agenda, and typically, a consent agenda has to have more than one item on it, so we moved item A to new business, and it's become item C under new business. So, I'll move right to new business, and the first item under new business is consideration of a motion to approve a resolution adopting the DuPage County Natural Hazards Mitigation Plan. Do I have a motion to approve? Alderman Belzak, seconded by Alderman Belkey? Discussion. The roll, please.
Belzak?
Aye.
Belkey?
Aye.
Marquese?
Aye.
Shower?
Aye.
MacIver?
Aye.
Kenny?
Aye.
Seifert?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
The motion has, the resolution has been approved. Item B is a consideration of a motion to approve an ordinance amending Title III, Chapter III of our Liquor Control Regulations of the Darien City Code by adding new section 3-3-25, Video Gaming Signage to our Darien City Code. Do I have a motion to approve? Alderman Seifert, seconded by Alderman Marquese? Discussion. As you can recognize from the motion itself, we have added a new section to our code dealing with the whole issue of video gaming in Darien. It became, when we decided to allow video gaming in the City of Darien, we decided to take a look at signage in order to make sure that we don't have any, shall I say, unusual signs in the City of Darien related to video gaming, so the Municipal Services Committee tackled that issue this evening and brought forward the changes to our ordinance. If there is no other discussion, the roll, please.
Seifert?
Aye.
Marquese?
Aye.
Belkey?
Aye.
Kenny?
Aye.
Belzak?
Aye.
MacIver?
Aye.
Shower?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
The motion has been approved. The item C is a motion to approve a resolution authorizing city staff to proceed with water main improvements and a water service line for the public works facility, which is located at 1041 South Frontage Road, at a cost not to exceed $25,509.8. Do I have a motion to approve? Do I have a motion to approve? Alderman Shower, seconded by Alderman Belke? Discussion. Yes, sir.
The only question, I think, because it's such an high amount, and I understand where the amount's coming from, this is coming from the tower over there where we're getting the $63,000 from the tower. Is that correct?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. If there's no other discussion, the roll, please.
Shower?
Aye.
Belke?
Aye.
Kenny?
Aye.
Belzak?
Aye.
Maciver?
Aye.
Marques?
Aye.
Seifert?
Aye.
Seven ayes. No nays.
The motion has been approved. Let's move to questions, comments, and announcements of a general nature from the city council first. Alderman Marques?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Just again, I know I mentioned this at the last meeting. This Friday and Saturday, the Darien Lions Club, in conjunction with the Darien Park District and the Darien Women's Club, will be packing groceries and delivering groceries to close to, I think, 200 families. I think 195 to 198 families. It's a tremendous effort on the part of all those organizations. The Lions Club is proud to be the lead agent in this group. Again, donations for a family total $75. If someone in Darien would like to still make a donation, they should make a check payable to the Darien Lions Club Foundation, which is a 501(c)(3), so it would be a tax deduction. If someone would just like to come in and work and pack groceries on Friday, I believe it's 5:00, Jim. And then Saturday morning, we'll be delivering groceries to about 195 to 200 families. If you'd like to come out for that, you're welcome to join us for that as well.
Thank you.
What time is it on Saturday?
8:30 at Fairview School. Or Fairview Park District.
Community Center.
Community Center, excuse me. Yes.
Do we have any announcements, comments from the audience this evening? Then, before we adjourn, I'd like to wish everyone in Darien happy holidays, Merry